To the Tuesday, April fifteenth work session of Glen County Board of Commissioners. I've asked Commissioner Tostes to lead us in prayer and Commissioner Swett to do the pledge. Will you please stand?
Father God, thank you for allowing us to be here today. Thank you for loving us and blessing us the way you have. Thank you for allowing us to live where we live. Keep your hand upon us today as we go forth to make decisions that hopefully for the better of Glen County. We ask this all in your son Jesus' precious holy name. Amen.
Place the flag, hand it on the heart.
Praise the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number one, we're going to receive a presentation from Jennifer Klein of the inaugural Coastal Resilience Academy. Sorry about that there.
That's okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes ma'am. You can push it down.
It doesn't want to, does it?
Okay. Thank you for having me. My name is Jennifer Klein. I'm with the Georgia Department of Natural Resources Coastal Management Program. And I'm here to tell you a little bit about our inaugural Resiliency Leadership Academy at the request of Commissioner Booker. Our program, first of all, I'd like to tell you a little bit about our program. We provide technical assistance to local governments in the coastal area. That includes eleven coastal counties. The first six counties that are ocean facing and we go inland one tier because those are tightly influenced communities. We provide technical assistance in the form of funding small projects, in the form of subject matter expertise, tools, resources, and training. Most of that training has been towards for your staff and not necessarily for elected officials, until now. So this year, the academy, which was held in January, was hosted on Jekyll Island. The academy is designed to equip locally elected officials with knowledge, tools, and resources, and a network needed to build a stronger, more resilient Georgia coast. The biannual academy will ensure that even as leadership changes, our coastal communities will stay prepared in the future. So our first step was to define what coastal resiliency is. Pretty short and simple. It's the ability for a coastal community to adapt to changing conditions and be able to withstand and recover from anything from societal, physical, economic, and ecological disruptions. It was really important for us to establish a consistent definition so that we were all playing off of the same terminology. As we did with all, we had sixteen different elected officials this go around. And with each community, we provided them with all of their documents that are on hand that help the community to be more resilient. And this is a list of the Glen County documents that you all have and have been adopted or are part of your planning process. Just so that you know, you know, this is when you're planning for resiliency, these are some things that you can utilize and that are at your, you know, whenever you need them, they're there. Some of the things that we covered is how to apply these resiliency principles in your job as elected officials. The who, who you can reach out to, who does them in your staff, who can do them at the state level, and who some of those resources can be. We also leaned heavily on the Legislative Environmental Leadership Policy Academy. That is hosted by the House Natural Resources Committee and House Game and Fish Committee. They do that every year in the fall before legislative session begins. And it's the same template. They go out and they see, our representatives will go out and see what what some of the challenges are in the environment, what some of the things that are going on in different areas and different communities, and how they as representatives need to be more informed about the decisions that they are making. And so we use the same agenda and syllabus that our state leaders are also using to be more aware of this. And Madam Chairman, Representative Lynn Smith was so gracious to come and Representative Rick Townsend to both be a speaker to the efficacy of this, you know, program. We did a site visit, which you'll learn a little bit more about, get out in the field, get to see how communities can actually implement resiliency efforts in your community, and how in the end it saves your taxpayers dollars by being more resilient. Handed out a lot of resources to the elected officials. Not that we expect you all to have read them because it would be terrible bedtime reading material, but so that you know that they exist and that they're on hand and where to point to. We also heard from the industry and bank, insurance and banking industry, and why it's important from their perspective as well to be a more resilient community. And then we talked about next steps, which you'll hear a little bit about in a second. We have twenty-four seats available. This is a biannual Leadership Academy. And those twenty-four seats were nominated by the liaison of the ACCG and GMA liaison to the Carl Vincent Institute of Government for Training and Certifications. This was our example, and it's right here in your backyard. This is Linear Boulevard, right in Brunswick. And there is a project underway that the city has been taking on to look at hybrid adaptation and mitigation steps. We can't do everything green. And so looking at where we can do green bioswales, rain gardens, making changes to Glen Middle School in their area to better absorb some of that upland stormwater runoff, as well as we have the high tide flooding coming in at the same time. And how can we adapt to elevate that road so that parents who are dropping their children off at Glen Middle School are going to be constantly driving through salt water multiple times a year and getting that rust under their undercarriage of their cars. This is a nationally renowned project. There is quite a bit of interest in seeing this come through. And then also to the left, the left picture is also part of Linear Boulevard. And that is a recent land acquisition that was slated for development. The developer was so gracious to offer that up to be sold. We provided grant funding to the city to then purchase that piece of property. And it is going to be used for watershed delineation and storage, and will no longer be set for development, helping with the flood mitigation, with the flooding issues that happen there in that area. So it's a it's a great opportunity for us to highlight some of the different things that can be done for resiliency, and it's here. Here are some of the resources that have been provided. It's the same with with Glen County. You all have a disaster recovery and redevelopment plan that includes multiple resiliency action items and steps. And you all adopted that in two thousand and eighteen. It also includes a suite of sea level rise maps so that you can see where that high tide flooding is going to be going and looking to that map for infrastructure planning and where you're spending your your capital improvement funds. There is also a guidance document for coastal resilience and looking at green growth options as some of those can be included, and what community rating system points you all can get for implementing some of those practices. If you're not as familiar with the community rating system, by participating as a county, you are able to offer up to your flood insurance citizens a discounted rate. So it's really important to be able to to do that and keep that up. And then also a copy of the State Hazard Mitigation Plan because those do have some other resiliency steps and action items as well. And then this is just kind of a takeaway from our Resiliency Academy. As I mentioned, we had representatives from Camden County, two representatives from the city of Brunswick, Commissioner Booker from Glen County. We had two commissioners from Brantley County. We had a commissioner from the city of Jessup, Bryan County, city of Pembroke, McIntosh County, city of Darien, Chatham County, and the city of Savannah. And each of them were given awarded their certificates. They will be allowed to sit with us when we make the next, the next decision about who the next class will be invited to come. And then they are also looking at other resiliency steps there. Because they were a part of the class, they're able to take a tour in May of Camden County's resiliency hub and then also communicate with each other and network with each other on different steps and methods that have been taken in resiliency in their communities. And that's all I have if there are any questions.
Thank you ma'am. I do have one question.
Sure.
On Linear Boulevard, the flooding, that comes in through the sewer system, doesn't it? The drain, the storm drain?
Some of it, so there's a couple of, it's, we call it combined flooding. So there is, when we have our, when we have high tide flooding, that is going, some of it is going over the road, just flat out over the road because the road is at grade. And then some of it is coming up through the stormwater systems where the water from the stormwater should be coming out at the same time.
Would tide gates help that?
In some places they would, in some places they would not be permitted. And so they are looking at where it where it could, where it would not impact the the marsh coming up. They'll, they're going to be looking at putting in tide gates. And then in other places, they're going to look at, including say such as the school, they're looking at adding bio retention. So there are like little bio, little rain gardens that can collect about twenty-four inches of rain if need be. And so it's pretty significant. You all have one of the rain gardens at Gascoigne Bluff. That one's been there probably the longest in the area.
Okay. We have any questions, gentlemen? Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Number two is receive an update from the DNR on the need for a stricter lease ordinance for the beach due to dogs interfering with shore birds. Mr. Hagin?
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners, County Manager Fallon, County Attorney Mumford. As part of our efforts to secure the Shore Protection Act permit for the Coast Guard Beach renovation project, we had the opportunity to present the project to the Georgia Department of Natural Resources. In that process, specific concern was raised regarding the county's current approach to protecting nesting shorebirds, especially in high traffic areas like East Beach. As many of you know, these beaches are not only recreational assets, but they're also critical habitats for species like the American oyster catcher and Wilson's plover and the federally protected red knot. The DNR expressed concern that our existing leash law ordinance, particularly the language allowing for voice control in lieu of a leash, is too vague to protect these species effectively. In response, the DNR asked that we take a closer look at our current ordinances and explore ways to strengthen our conservation practices. To support that effort, I've invited Tim Kais from the Georgia DNR to speak with us this afternoon. He's one of the state's leading experts on shorebird conservation and will provide a brief presentation on the issue, including some, some of the impacts we're seeing locally from the off-leash dogs in nesting areas. Mr. Kais?
Thank you, Jason, and thank you Commissioners for having me today. Good afternoon. Again, I'm Tim Kais. I work for our Wildlife Conservation Section of Wildlife Resource Division here in, at the Brunswick office. Up until March first, I was a shorebird biologist and worked as a biologist, working with birds for twenty-odd years. I've recently taken over as program manager of that, of that program so overseeing our other endangered species programs as well. I appreciate the invite to speak with you all about the issue of birds at Coast Guard Beach. Again, in the context of of the county winning approximately three million dollars in conservation dollars, I've been asked to help to sort of ensure and enhance the conservation value of that, of the beach. So quickly, I'll go over some of the, some of the species which use East Beach. Particularly, the most important area tends to be Gould's Inlet area, so the northern part of the beach. So there's, given the temperate climate of Georgia and extensive habitat, we've got basically shorebirds year round. We do, starting around this time of year, right now, we've got birds on the beach on eggs. So these are temperate nesting species like the Wilson's plover, American oyster catcher, least turn. Occasionally, black skimmers have nested out there in Gould's Inlet. And these birds basically just make a little scrape on the sand, very, very inobtrusive, hard to even see, lay eggs that are incredibly cryptic, so you can see they look essentially like sand. Those eggs typically are exposed on those beaches for anywhere from twenty-five to thirty days, very vulnerable. Once the chicks hatch, they're also, they're little fluffy, fluffy cotton balls on toothpicks running around for another twenty-five to thirty-five days. Again, a very vulnerable stage for them for almost two months. And we have, we've worked to post off some of the key areas out on East Beach where some of these birds nest to try to minimize the potential disturbance. Here's an oyster, American oyster catcher, about one day old, waiting for a sibling to hatch. So again, right there on the beach, sand colored, very, very cryptic. We also have birds here year round, over wintering in Georgia. We average over, over a hundred thousand shorebirds wintering on the coast and then migrating through as well. So here's a couple of examples of federally listed species. The piping plover on the left is a small plover that breeds in the Great Lakes and the North Atlantic, spends much of its winter time in the southeast, South Carolina, and Georgia. Many of them are tagged, so if you spend much time on East Beach and have a cam or a binoculars, you can actually identify individual birds. This particular bird was hatched, the first chicks to successfully hatch from an urban beach in Chicago that we found here on the Georgia coast. The red knot, which Jason mentioned, is another federally threatened species. This is a long distance, the classic long-distance migrant. These guys, many of them will winter in Terre Haute, Fuego, southern South America, and then, and then migrate all the way to the high Arctic, nesting within five hundred miles of the North Pole. So, and in a given year, that's about a twenty thousand mile round trip, leading to the fact that we call birds red knots that live to eleven or twelve years old moon birds because during their lifetime, they have flown the distance from the earth to the moon. Now, we have some overwintering in Georgia, but really our key, the key window for for red knots is spring migration when they're fueling up to make a flight to the Arctic. And we can have up to two thousand red knots in Gould's Inlet, depending on the, on the availability of food and the season. We've documented up to thirteen thousand statewide in spring and up to twenty-one thousand statewide in fall. So Georgia is an incredibly important spot, location for these birds, given there's only approximately forty-five to fifty thousand estimated to be in existence. So unfortunately, many of these shorebirds are suffering significant declines. You may all remember in two thousand and nineteen, Cornell produced a report indicating that North America had lost roughly three billion birds since nineteen seventy. Different reasons for different groups of birds, but shorebirds overall have suffered about a thirty percent decline, and red knots specifically have suffered about a seventy percent decline since the nineteen eighties. All sorts of reasons for that, from their nesting grounds to their wintering grounds and in between. But they're here in spring, and, and actually, we've done work with partners in South Carolina and Georgia where we've actually captured and tagged many of these red knots in spring. The sort of red knot migration dogma has been that everybody goes through Delaware Bay in spring because that's where all the horseshoe crabs are, that's where they need to build up their fat reserves to make that last jump to the Arctic. That never made a lot of sense to us here in Georgia, working with red knots because they were here late enough that it didn't tie, it couldn't sink with the peaks in Delaware Bay. But only recently, the technology's gotten such that we can actually capture and tag these birds. I mean, they're the size of a robin, so imagine putting a satellite transmitter on a robin. It needs to be pretty small. So these are two and a half gram or smaller transmitters. And over three or four years of tagging these, these birds, we concluded that over seventy percent of them leave Georgia and South Carolina straight for the Arctic. They bypass Delaware Bay entirely. And the real importance of that is that the southeast is critical for them to get that weight on. They're roughly doubling their body weight. And then they're flying four to five days and nights nonstop to get to their nesting ground. So they're feeding on horseshoe crab eggs and clams, and those, those resources are sort of ephemeral coming and going, so the birds will move around year to year. But we do provide, from between Georgia and South Carolina, we provide significant habitat and forage for them. Sadly, dogs can be a problem with both of our beach nesting birds and our migratory shorebirds. We've documented oyster catcher chicks being killed by dogs on Little Tybee. Last summer, we had a tragic incident on Oguichi Bar where dogs got into one of our big sea bird colonies, killing numerous least turns and black skimmers. We do regularly see, we post the, the colony on East Beach, and ninety-nine percent of people are great with that. Walk, we can see from foot traffic that that it really does a good job. But there's still dogs that get in and out there, and we regularly see dog tracks going into there. So if you think about the potential for disturbance, if you're a nesting shorebird with eggs sitting right on the beach, we think about birds incubating eggs to keep them warm. In Georgia, in summer, our beach nesting birds are incubating eggs to keep them cool. So if a dog or people get too close, they do leave those nests. And in a relatively short time, those eggs or small chicks can overheat and expire. They can also just push the adults off and allow other predators to get them, like crows and gulls and, and crackles, which are, which are all common on our beach. For, for the wintering and, and foraging shorebirds, it's just sort of a level of disturbance. When there's a really abundant food resource and they're, they have six weeks to double their body weight, I liken it to, to training for their body weight, uh, I liken it to, to, um, training for marathon, and you are carb loading, trying to get ready, trying to get all your energy resources packed in, and every ten or fifteen minutes, someone comes and kicks you out of your chair, chases you around the room a few times before letting you sit down again and continue carb loading. Uh, but the, the, the ability to put on the weight before they leave the Southeast called their, uh, so Southeast would be their terminal staging area before they jump to the Arctic. Uh, we can predict, based on the weight that they leave, their departure weight, whether they're likely to survive, uh, and raise young or not. Um, so there, there's a fair amount of work, uh, done on, on, uh, both direct and indirect results of just, uh, impacts of disturbance on shorebirds. Virginia Tech has really taken a lead in this. Um, they've documented ten percent higher mortality in piping pullovers in South Carolina on beaches with a lot of dog and, and human traffic compared to more remote beaches. Uh, this was work in Georgia where they actually were looking at, uh, looking at parts of the DNA of birds compared between be, remote beaches and, and, and regularly used beaches, and looking at the degradation of telomeres, which are basically the caps on the end of, of, uh, DNA strands that, that are basically, typically, they indicate age, so it's like stress-induced aging. Uh, so there's, so basically, the, the evidence suggests that, that birds suffer from stress, which basically mimics an aging process for them. Uh, so there's, there's, there's definitely, uh, direct and indirect impacts. Our concern, coming back to East Beach specifically, is with some of the language, it's, uh, it's the language of dogs being under your verbal control is a challenging rule to enforce. There's also hasn't been, in our experience, much effort to enforce, so there's oftentimes clearly dogs that are off of anybody's verbal control, many, you know, many yards away from an owner, running. Um, dogs, uh, regularly like to chase things, as we know, um, and, uh, and so birds are often chased and harassed there. This was a, this was, uh, the result of a Virginia Tech study. They monitored forty-one beaches from Nova Scotia to Florida, and shockingly, Saint Simon's East Beach is the leftmost bar on each four, all four of those graphs. We were, we are a total outlier in terms of the number of dogs on a beach compared to forty other beaches up and down the Atlantic coast. This is part of a study looking at different levels of disturbance for shorebirds. Uh, so I think having a vague rule that's not enforced has really impacted, um, Saint Simon's East Beach and turned it into a real outlier, um, for, for potential disturbance, uh, from dogs. Uh, so, um, I would just suggest some, some recommendations. Um, I think that the, the language could be clarified. It, it's a lot easier to enforce, uh, a simple rule like a dog has to be on a leash or a closed area compared to dogs under, under ver, verbal control. I think, uh, there's also a possibility to look at what are the highest conservation areas and see if we can exclude dogs, at least seasonally, um, uh, to try and maximize the, uh, the, the potential conservation, uh, benefit of those. So, uh, I think ultimately, um, there's, there's a number of local, uh, uh, islands that have done similar things. So Jekyll, for instance, noticed that the south beach where there's accretion and dune building and a lot of beach nesting birds, uh, was really uniquely critical for wildlife and decided to close that, that south por, portion of the beach to dogs. Um, that's certainly one option. Kiowa has had a similar situation. So there's both, there's both temporal and, um, spatial options there, um, where, where you could pick the most, most critical sites and, and maybe keep dogs out of those, um, and have other areas where either seasonally or with leashes, you can have, uh, you could have dogs. So I'm not recommending, um, no dogs at all. Of course, I think there's, I think the, the, uh, the real benefit here is that the Georgia coast is an incredible place for both people and birds. And East Beach really gives us an opportunity to highlight both of those. There's tremendous education potential, there's a growing interest in birds, it's the most rapidly growing outdoor recreation hobby currently. It's infiltrating our Netflix culture with TV shows like, uh, uh, I always forget, I wanna say Descendants, but it's, um, Residents. And, um, and, and just in the same way that there's relatively few drive, driving access beaches for beachgoers on the Georgia coast, given the number of islands, there's relatively few places that people who appreciate birds can go, uh, and easily enjoy those. And, and there's also plenty of other, um, I, 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 I think that, um, the really passionate group of dog owners has really defined the character of the whole beach on Saint Simon. So you can't go anywhere on that beach without encountering dogs. For me personally, that meant for a certain stage of my kid's life, I didn't go there because they were terrified of dogs that ran up. They weren't aggressive, they were friendly dogs, uh, but just, I think we can come up with a solution that gives both people and wildlife a little bit of a break, um, while there's other places where dogs are fine. Uh, ultimately, of course, this is the county's decision. I would recommend that, um, that a task force be formed, and, and we can discuss and work on potential ordinance changes to East Beach, so that we can try and work out a compromise where a, as we increase the number of folks coming to the beach through this Gosa Grant at Coast Guard Beach, we're, we're improving the access, uh, that we also ensure that there's, uh, added conservation value to the wildlife there. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
I have a question, please. Go ahead, Sam.
Well, I was gonna, this may be a more addressed to, uh, County Attorney, but to our ordinances with dogs and, uh, dogs on the beaches and things like that. Our dog.
Dogs can't get into the dunes and things such as that, they're restricted in, in those areas. And are your, these birds you're referring to, are they more in the dunes or are they on the hard, hard sand beach or?
So it's a combination of both. The nesting birds are in the dry sand dunes up above the, above the mean high-tide line, because, because those eggs can't flood.
That's a restricted area anyway, so there's no dogs and no people up in those areas.
Yeah, there are. Yeah, there are. So, I mean.
They're both people and dogs.
Both people and dogs in that, in those dune areas. Um, and then the foraging birds are, are out a lot of times at the water's edge.
Well, it brings me to my next question. Uh, I know that there was some Gosa Grant money that was available when they, we did the, uh, when we did the, uh, resident, help me here, uh. Coast Guard Beach. Coast Guard Beach, uh, project. Uh, and, uh, the resources that y'all have, uh, are probably more in tune with what we have with our Glen County Police Department, things like that. Would y'all be willing to, uh, put forth additional manpower to help patrol this and help keep this in place?
I would have limited option. I am not part of the law enforcement wing of, of DNR. I could, I could certainly reach out to our law enforcement to see. Uh, they, they have helped with, in the past, with some of our, um, Bird Island Rule closures, uh, when, uh, which are specific sites that are, that have been set aside as key nesting sites. Uh, but they're also very stretched thin as well, so I can't certainly commit to that now.
I mean, seems like that would be a, a, a number one, in my opinion, uh, solution to the problem with just more.
It has to be some, some enforcement, whether it's county or whatever the, whatever the, there, there does need to be enforcement of whatever the rule is, even if it's the existing rule.
Well, that's all I have. Commissioner Duncan?
Um, I've read through the recommendations here, and I think one of them is really good is the education of, um, public in general. Includes people who have dogs and people who don't have dogs. They need to have an understanding of what the hazards are to the wildlife, and, uh, I'm glad to see that recommendation, and we would draw on you or your team to help craft that as we, um, develop signage at the access points. Uh, one thing I wanted to ask is, do you have a recommended ordinance that you would suggest to Glen County to consider, or have seen another city or county that has an ordinance that's more pro, uh, protective, if you will, of, of the wildlife?
I don't have one with me right now.
No, 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 I mean, have you seen another city that has a, a better ordinance than we do?
Yeah, like Kiowa, Kiowa, I think, has a, and I can, I can, um, uh, probably track down that, that ordinance, but that's the, the map that I'm showing here is the end result of, of their process of trying to work on, work on these similar, similar sort of issues.
Okay. And I heard you talk, you mentioned, um, Gould's Inlet quite a bit as perhaps the more primary or selected area for the wildlife to, to nest, is, um, from your observations or those of your team. Is that sufficiently far away that it's not a factor for our construction project at Coast Guard Beach?
Uh, yeah, it's significant. It's, it's far enough away, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions?
Anyone else?
All right, well, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Golden Isles Development Authority, an update. Mr. Moore?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Thank y'all for having me. Uh, Commissioner Neal, thank you for making the invite. Really happy to be here today and give you a, an update on some of the good things that are happening, um, in the Golden Isles. Uh, certainly a lot going on, and, uh, we're, we're fortunate to, to be where we are and live where we do. Thank you for all you do. Uh, just to get it started, I'll, I'll start at exit forty-two. If you haven't been out to exit forty-two recently, it looks a little different than it did a couple of years, years ago. Uh, Buc-Ee's is all but complete. They're finishing their work in the DOT right-of-way, uh, three traffic circles there. Both of the off-ramps will have a roundabout, uh, and then there'll be a third coming, allowing for a left-hand turn movement out of Buc-Ee's. So good to see that Brunswick, uh, name up, up in lights, up, up in the sky, looking really good. Uh, scheduled completion is August, so really excited. They were having a hiring event last week, and, uh, they've already hired quite a bit of their, their managerial staff and continuing to add, uh, floor-line per, personnel, so, uh, they're ramping up quickly. On the west side of I-95, uh, this is a piece of property that the Development Authority owned up until, uh, about a year ago. We sold that to Hillpoint. Hillpoint is constructing a five-hundred-thousand-square-foot warehouse. It's hard to get a sense of scale, but this will be the largest industrial building in Glen County. Uh, Hillpoint has a spin-off company called Pro Direct that will be handling all of their distribution and occupy roughly, roughly half of that building. The other half will be speculative. Uh, they do have, they've identified one tenant, so we're down to about two-hundred-thousand square foot left in that building, and I suspect it'll go very quickly. Lot of, lot of interest in that building, lot of eyes on it. Hundred and thirty thousand cars a day drive down ninety-five, and you can't miss it. So really good to see that development occurring. That was about fifty-five of the seventy acres that we owned at that location. Right north, uh, directly north of that site is a twenty, roughly twenty-acre site. Uh, we sold that, uh, eight months ago to a company called JB Two. They are a developer for a yet-to-be-named in, in-user. Uh, we're really excited about who that is, and hopefully we'll be able to make an announcement here towards the end of the year, but, uh, they've gotten, gotten underway very quickly. Uh, they cleared that site, and that building will be going vertical here very soon, so a lot of activity, a lot of, a lot of machinery, a lot of jobs, a lot of, a lot of, uh, development going on at exit forty-two. So exciting times. McBride Industrial Park, this project is one that's, uh, near and dear to my heart because it took seven years to get here. Uh, this is the new Jared facility, so Jared Par, Par Systems, they're expanding. That's about a hundred-thousand-square-foot expansion. Uh, highly technical, they build systems for navies around the world, uh, elevator systems for aircraft carriers and other, uh, ship components. A very specialized niche industry. We're, we're very happy to have them here, they've been here for a long time. Uh, at the time we started this project, they started with a blank sheet of paper, and they could've gone anywhere in the world. Uh, they supply these, these parts to other navies, not just the, the federal government here, but around the world, and, uh, they, they could've been anywhere. Uh, but what kept them in Brunswick and the Golden Isles was their workforce. They realized how specialized their workforce was and how difficult that would be to replicate somewhere else. Over the course of seven years, we convinced them that was the right decision, went through several leadership changes, but finally got it done, uh, issued bonds for that facility, financed it, um, and they are getting close to completion on the shell and will be outfitting the interior of the building. This will also allow them to move out of the big, uh, dare I say ugly building at the bottom of the, uh, uh, the bridge, so, uh, down at Liberty Harbor, and we're excited about that, too. That'll be one, one less development issue for Liberty Harbor, and we hope that allows that development to move forward rapidly. So as soon as this building's up, they'll move their equipment over, and within eighteen months, they'll be fully moved, uh, into their building. So good to see that going, going forward. On the right, you'll see our last ten acres and, uh, developable property in the McBride Park. That is on Glencoe Parkway, directly across from the airport. We sold that, uh, within the last month to a development company that's going to do flexible warehousing. They're putting up about a hundred-thousand square foot. We're waiting on the final site plan, but, uh, it should be about a hundred-thousand square foot of a product similar to what you see on the left, uh, but very excited about that, very, this is a product that's sorely needed for contractors, uh, and, and others working in the area that need a small office at the front and warehousing space at the back. Um, most of the inventory that we have in the area is, is third and fourth generation, so it'll be nice to have a, a nice new building where, uh, people can take up residence and have a retail frontage and, uh, contractors face in the back. So excited about that. But that closes out McBride Industrial Park, so we are out of developable property there. Uh, we're also out of property at our I-95 site, so these projects have filled up all of that, and we're, uh, we're turning our attention to, uh, some property along Highway eighty-two and at the airport that we're very excited about. So we've talked about, uh, new, new business attraction, which is what we tend to focus on quite a bit, but arguably, the more important function that we have is to take care of our existing industry. Uh, Sherry Pruitt in our office does a tremendous job of this and is constantly out making sure that our industries have what they need to succeed. She's really great at developing relationships and understanding, uh, companies' needs. And just as a, for instance, Willenius Wilhelmson invested two-hundred-million dollars at Colonel's Island over the course of the past three years. Uh, really a tremendous facility. They now have the best heavy equipment processing facility in the world, right here in Brunswick, right here on Colonel's Island. But because you can't see their facility from Highway seventeen, and you really don't have a lot of reason to be driving around in the port, most people haven't seen it. So they came to us and they said, "Look, we're, we need to get into the community and have a little more presence, so help us think about how to do that." Just one example, uh, Sherry came up with the idea, "Well, let's, let's go big on the Christmas parade in downtown Brunswick." So they brought a electric semi and a couple of, uh, pieces of equipment, two or three electric trucks and golf carts, and, uh, it was really a spectacle, did a great job. Uh, it was a great, great time together and, uh, a, a really good opportunity to get that Willenius brand out into the community. Another example is Barone Tea. Uh, Barone is loan, owned here locally, but was operating somewhere else in Georgia, uh, in Macon, and, uh, Sherry developed a relationship with these folks, convinced them not only that they need to be in the Golden Isles, but they needed to be downtown. And if you've not been to Barone Tea, it's just over here by the courthouse, uh, really interesting little place, uh, great tea. I'm not personally a tea drinker, but, um, it gets rave reviews, and I, I encourage you to go by and, and take a look, uh, and have some tea. So, uh, great things happening within the existing industry segment. Uh, we have six priorities as an authority, uh, new business attracted, attraction, existing industry, entrepreneurship, and, and we'll talk about the rest in a second. One other thing that Sherry does through the existing industry program and within the entrepreneurship, uh, realm is our Share the Future Fund, and we've invested quite heavily in small business over the past five years. I was at, uh, The Brick recently, Bricks at the corner of MLK and Glausur, a karate facility. My boys go to karate, so I'll leave them and kind of walk around sometimes. And I walked out and saw the big mural on the side of the building, and it caught my attention, and then I remembered that was one of our grants that went to that mural. And so I kept walking, and I passed Barone Tea, uh, went to Norwich Street, and happened to think about all of the businesses along Norwich Street, the Sundance Tows, the Community Impact Partners, uh, several other investments that we've made along Norwich. Barone Tea was another recipient. Got to Newcastle and thought about all of the businesses along Newcastle, from Silver Bluff Brewing to Dotton Army, Grace Graffiti, Arlene Sewing, um, and several others, on the fly. Um, it's really, uh, it's, it's great to be a part of the resurgence of downtown and of Brunswick, really something we're very proud of. And just totaling up the, the dollars that we've spent in entrepreneurship and small business over the last five years, we're, we're at over a half-a-million dollars invested in small business and entrepreneurs right here in Glen County and, and in the city of Brunswick. So really, really excited to, to see that trend continue. Uh, we did move into a new facility at the beginning of last year, uh, and the Lucas Center from the College of Coastal Georgia joined us in that facility. They do all of their downtown entrepreneurship programming in our space, and, um, been a great partnership. The activity, the vibrancy, uh, the, the entrepreneurs that come through, I encourage everybody to come, come have a conversation with the Lucas Center, they're doing great things. And, uh, some of their entrepreneurs have come out and been recipients of our grants, including, uh, Genesis Greens and, um, I just want to, oh, the Brown Butter Shop. So, uh, really glad to have that partnership in place, and it just more of a continuum so that when you start your business, you're, you're taken care of, uh, throughout the Workforce is another priority for the development. Workforce is another priority for the Development Authority. Recently, we partnered with Wings of Grace. Wings of Grace is a nonprofit that teaches students and young people how to become pilots and they've recently added an aviation mechanic component to their training. And this really was a good example of the community coming together. The airport did a great job of working with these folks, finding them a hangar and allowing them to operate at BQK. They have several planes in the hangar. They're training pilots and these are pilots that are starting their flight time in the tenth and eleventh grade. These are, these are young kids that really have a passion for flying and are going into the aviation industry. They wanted to set up an aviation mechanic program and went about it and when they said they were gonna do it, they just went and did it, which was awesome. We connected them with Job Corps facility and they were able to bring over students from Job Corps to get trained as AMT. So, this was a recent graduation. They graduated thirteen students that are now equipped and knowledgeable enough to go work in the aviation industry, which is something we sorely need here in the Golden Isles and an industry that we really want to build upon. So, because of the success of this first class, the Development Authority partnered with Georgia Power. Again, this is just another partnership and a lot of communication that's happened. Georgia Power gave the Development Authority a $40,000 grant for workforce, which we were able to put into this program and we will reimburse Wings of Grace for their first forty students next year. So, they'll go from a class of thirteen to next year they'll graduate forty aviation mechanic technicians. And you might ask, "Well, how do we need?" I don't think you can make too many. If you don't end up working on an airplane, there are industrial facilities all over this region that will hire you tomorrow if you, if you have an aptitude and a mechanical ability. So, we don't, we think the sky's the limit, pun intended. So, really excited to see, see those folks get some skills and hopefully go to work right here in the Golden Isles.
Segue.
Yes.
The Airport Commission recognized Wings of Grace graduates today at the Airport Commission meeting and had an opportunity to talk to some of them about what they wanted their next steps to be and they were excited about it. And Wings of Grace is going to expand into a manning aviation facility. They are growing and vibrant and contributing to our community, so.
Absolutely. Really glad to have them. They're doing a wonderful job. I'm glad the airport recognized them in a public way. They, they need all the support they can get, for sure. They're doing good things. So, we continue to execute on our workforce talent development strategy that we partnered with the Chamber on some time back. We've gone through three iterations of that. We keep adding future years and we keep executing the things that we said we were going to do four years ago. We've now done and we're on to the second and third iteration. So, I won't go into all of that, but this is just one example of an interesting outcome. So, we were discussing with our various partners, Coastal Pines, GICCA, Wings of Grace, and even our manufacturers in the area, a way to better showcase the talent that we have and the jobs that are available here in this community. We do quite a bit of that through our marketing, but we wanted to do it in a real, personal way that would be accessible to people in the community. So, what we did is we, we, uh, uh-oh. Am I okay over here? Okay, all right. So, we've coined what we call the Talent Discovery Showcase and quarterly at First Friday, we figure that's somewhat of a captive audience of five to 10,000 people, depending on who you ask, how many people come out, but it's certainly a crowd. So, we've cordoned off the block on Gloucester in front of the library and we bring in all of our various partners. We have aviation simulators, we have welding simulators. We bring in a ton of heavy equipment. Willenius Wilhelmson has been great about that. So, kids that are three years old can come out and climb around on a big dump truck. Middle schoolers can come out and play with a welding machine. Elementary school, children can play on the aviation simulator and people are getting really jazzed up and it's really, it really is hitting the nail on the head for the three audiences we have for workforce, which are parent, teachers, and students. Generally, those students come with their parent and the teachers are walking around, too, and everybody's right there seeing what's available in the Golden Isles. So, something that started off as a simple concept, we thought it would end up being a couple of booths. There's now a whole block of equipment and simulators and fun things for kids to do, get them excited about careers that we have right here in the Golden Isles. Marketing is another of our priorities and I won't go into the details. You can read through that on the screen. But suffice it to say, we're, we are getting our brands in front of millions of people a year. That's the Golden Isles Development Authority brand as well as Keep Glenn Running, which is our marketing effort to, again, reach those parents, teachers, and students. Don't have the numbers on there, but we're getting that message of available careers and education right here in Glenn County out to over 20,000 people a year through that Keep Glenn Running brand. When I came to, well, not quite that. So, four or five years ago, we partnered with the Trade Winds Group. They're 690 acres south of where we have our Hillpoint building going up out at ninety-five and it's privately owned. And we went through a process of shoring up that relationship, working together, created a website, created a brand, created some marketing. And a part of that was we were gonna hire a common broker and we wanted an international or national firm to help us with brokering that property. So, we reached out to brokers in Jacksonville and Savannah and the guys in Savannah wouldn't even call us back. We must've called six or seven different brokers. We finally got a response and went back and forth with the broker for a couple of weeks and she finally said, "Look, it's just not worth it." All we were asking them to do was list our property, thirty-five, forty-million-dollar piece of property between us and our partners. So, we were a little dumbfounded by that and what it proved out was that we were just, we were not on the radar of anybody in Jacksonville or Savannah. And we've done a heck of a lot of work to get where we are today, that we have millions of people viewing what we have here in this community and now those brokers are calling us. And it really is a great time to be doing business in the Golden Isles. There's just a lot of activity and a lot of progress. Just going to the webpages, over a hundred thousand people sign in, tune into our website in various different ways throughout the year and that continues to grow. So, we've been growing that forty, fifty percent year-over-year for the past three years and continue, plan to continue to do that into the future. Just some of our other marketing efforts. We do also partner with Brunswick News and get the message of Keep Glenn Running out, again, parents, teachers, and students through that medium. Over 1.2 million people are viewing or clicking through on that. We also highlight some of our local businesses, White Star Supply, Brown Butter Shop, International Auto Processing. We have a little advertorial in there that kind of explains what some of those businesses are doing and the good things that are happening. Really a good way to get their brand out and also talk about the good work that's happening in small business in particular. The last priority that we have is site development. We're really excited about this. We've invested quite a bit of money in the area north of the runway at the BQK Brunswick Airport. That's steed up and ready to go. We have some really nice sites for industry that needs runway-accessible property, so we'll continue to market that. We also purchased the Georgia Brick Bolt Logistics Park going back a couple of years ago with the help of the Board of Commissioners. Thank you for your contribution through the SLOSS program to that. Over the last eighteen months, we've fully engineered that and had it grad-certified at the State of Georgia and that just means that all of the engineering, preliminary engineering that needs to be done before an industry comes in has been done. Because of our efforts through marketing and also the engineering work that we've done, we were successful in receiving a $2 million grant from the State of Georgia. That is a rural site development grant and that will allow us to put in the two entrances into this park. So, just to orient you a little bit, this is five miles west of I-95 on Highway eighty-two, seven miles west of Colonel's Island Gate. And we have two entrances planned. The engineering work on that is underway now. We plan to break ground in the next six months, but that'll allow us to have a full turning movement on the western end with a median break and then a right-in, right-out, a little further east, allowing all of the industries that will eventually be in the park to have two, two points of ingress, egress. Park backs up to the Golden Isles Terminal Rail, which is also the rail that goes into Colonel's Island, owned by Genesee in Wyoming. Very active rail, but also a very progressive organization and they are, have been great to work with, very accepting of proposals for industry. So, quite a few eyes on that and we expect that to continue, especially with the actual physical turning of dirt that's going to happen here in the next, next couple of months. So, exciting things are coming and we're, we're appreciative of all you do for the authority and all of your support. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
I'm good. Anybody got anything?
Congrats on the progress. Thank you. Appreciate the work you and your team are doing.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you coming in today, Ryan, and sharing the work that the Development Authority has been doing. Look forward to future progress and, and future sites to develop and to, to, again, grow our workforce and, and keep Glenn County moving. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Number four is receiving update regarding the county's future projects. Mr. Fallon?
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Good afternoon, everyone. I appreciate you giving me a few minutes here to talk about some of the planning that we actually have for the future. And so, over the course of really the last couple of years, I know that the Board has really taken some, some great steps in becoming a little bit more strategic than in years past. We certainly have a strategic plan. We have our quarterly execution reviews where we talk about all the projects, all the initiatives to actually get us to that success and that strategic plan. We do have a quarterly execution review coming up on May seventh and that, we're actually gonna do that at night. We're gonna do it, I believe, at 5:30 on May seventh and that's gonna be on our SLOSS project. So, anybody can come. We're gonna have it in this room. We're gonna do a little marketing on that in the coming weeks, but just as a save the date, May seventh, excuse me, is going to be our SLOSS quarterly execution review here. All right. So, just to kind of talk about really where we are when it comes to our kind of planning for the future. As I mentioned, we want to be a little bit more strategic. These are the three goals that the Commissioners have for us. We also have our Glenn County Comprehensive Plan that's out there. So, that really serves as the framework for us to be able to move forward and really put Glenn County moving forward in that direction that we want to see it move in. But with that said, we still have, there's, there's a lot of things that we talk about. We talk about some critical needs that we have. We talk about some needs that we have across the county for various things. We talk about a lot of want, certainly. But when it comes to some of the critical needs, I think that what I've heard from the Board is that we really want to start being able to plan for some of these things, get it out to the community and let the community actually see some of the things that we know, things that we hear from them, but also things that we see based on the work that staff does throughout the, throughout the county. And so, what I'm gonna talk about is a couple of different projects that are critical, that we feel are critical. They're related to, to traffic, road improvements and drainage. A lot of times we get comments related particularly to traffic, you know, why is the county kind of thinking ahead? And why, why is the county thinking about these problems that we have on some of our roadways? If we had done so ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, we might not have some of the, some of the traffic congestion that we have now. So, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to plan for the future and these are gonna be a couple of, just a couple of areas where we think we wanted to kind of circulate with the public, get your feedback, certainly here from, from the Commissioners and from staff. We have staff here that's going to answer any questions that you have. So, I just have a couple that we have highlighted as, as some of the critical areas that we have. And so, as everybody knows, we actually have a plan in place right now. We're working on Frederica Road. There's two areas really in the county, I think, where we have some really significant traffic problems. And probably more than two, but there's two that I really want to talk about today. The first one is gonna be Frederica Road. And so, we all know the problems that we see over on Frederica Road. There are some challenges that we have related to public safety access as well as just traffic. And so, we all know when Frederica Road gets backed up, it's hard to get an ambulance through, it's hard to get a cruiser through. And so, we want to see what we can do to, to make some improvements out there. One thing just to point out here for the Frederica Road project that we have ongoing is that we plan for an open house in early June. So, more to come on that, but another save the date, that first week in June, we're gonna have kind of the first results and we're gonna be able to present that at an open house. And Commissioners, what I'll do is I'll buzz through these and then we'll go back and we can bring up any of the ones that you want to have a conversation on or questions. So, the second one that we see a lot of congestion is Old Jessup Road. And I think we all know that Old Jessup Road has its challenges with the, with the lack of right-of-way that we actually have. So, some of those houses are right up on the road. We have made some recent improvements, though, I think, which have gone a long way. We're in the process of a SLOSS project, I think, which will help. Couple of Commissioners asked us just to do some widening, some basic widening. And so, if you, if you drive on Old Jessup Road now, you're gonna see where we actually had a project, I believe, from, from Walker out to Crispin, where there was some widening that was recently done. And that's actually made a big improvement, I think, just by, just for safety reasons along that road. The next biggest, well, the next project that we have is going to be between Walker and Scranton Road and that's our SLOSS project, where we're going to be making some improvements there. And I think that's probably one of the worst sections that we, that we see on Old Jessup Road, is that corridor between those two streets. And so, more to come on that, but that's, that's a project that is going to be happening. We talked about other possibilities to kind of relieve the stress on Old Jessup Road. And I know that GDOT way back when, probably twenty-something years ago, had, had thought about a project of widening Old Jessup Road. I think if we were going to do that now, the, the cost would be astronomical. But we, in talking to the Commissioners and some of the suggestions that we've gotten, there's other ways to do it. So, there's other ways to actually relieve some of that stress on Old Jessup Road and it's getting traffic off of Old Jessup Road. And so, a couple of those areas that, that we're talking about, so we do have a SLOSS project on Perry Lane Road to, to replace that bridge. And that bridge is gonna be hopefully replaced from a two-lane to a four-lane bridge. So, a future project there really is to widen Perry Lane Road. That would alleviate some of that stress from people coming in from the north that are, or west that are coming down to get to town. They could get onto, they could take Perry Lane Road, get over to the spur a little bit sooner than what they do now, which is essentially going all the way down to the intersection of 341 and 303. Another, another possibility that we could look at is Glendale Drive. And so, Glendale Drive, that would be a future project that would also help us with getting some of that traffic off of 341 over to the spur earlier. But that goes right through Old Jessup Road. And so, what we see right now, particularly on 341, some of the worst traffic that we see on 341 is people that are actually coming either to town in the mornings or they're trying to turn left on 303, Community Road, to get out to the spur. And so, having an option for them to, to make that way over to the spur a little bit earlier, I think, would solve a lot of our traffic congestion problems and really set us up nice for the future when it comes to some of those solutions that we need for, for vehicles. Next one up is Glencoe Parkway widening. And so, really this is, we do have this for design on SLOSS 2022. And so, this, really, the focus of this one is more evacuation route-specific. And so, this provides us with a better and more, I guess, accessible evacuation route from when we need it, all the way from seventeen over to the spur, obviously onto ninety-five and then points west. And so, then it also with potential airport expansion, we have Fletzy that uses that gate back there. We have those industrial areas. Ryan mentioned a couple that are back there now. And so, it just provides improved access for, for those, for those travelers that take that road, plus, like I said, evacuation routes in the future. The other thing here, so this kind of ties into where we have our current SLOSS project, which is widening of Canal Road and that roundabout there that ties into Glencoe Parkway. So, those projects are gonna be done here soon. So, those really set us up nice for the future, again, in some of those needs that we have. And particularly on the north side of Glenn County, we do see a lot of potential growth that's gonna happen on the north side of Glenn County. And so, some of these projects really help us identify and mitigate some of that, some of that traffic congestion that we're gonna see. Last one that I wanted to talk about was the spur. So, we're already starting to see the spur being very congested. And so, particularly during some of those peak times, and we see it congested really from Altama, or really from seventeen at times, but for the most part from Altama all the way up to ninety-five. And so, right now, the 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan has a, has a project that they've identified, which would widen the spur from four to six lanes, but their project actually goes from Kate Road to Walker Road Chapel Crossing. So, what we envision in really thinking about what Glenn County needs is to potentially expand that from, from Walker and Chapel Crossing all the way out to Altama. And so, that's another future project that I think is gonna be critical to really us being able to plan for, for traffic in the future. All right. So, those are the traffic projects that we have. We have a few drainage projects. So, the first one is really just a bigger, more broad scope regional drainage and retention improvement plan that we have. So, really what this is, and I'm gonna have Danny up here to answer any questions on this, but what we're trying to do when it comes to, when it comes to drainage is really be more proactive than reactive. We've been reactive for a long time. We, we live in an area where tides and storms and things affect us. And so, just being able to mitigate some of these drainage issues that we have around the county, I think, is critical. We listed a couple of neighborhoods up there that we would, that would be possible areas for us to consider. We also have plenty of other drainage projects that we're working on right now. So, right now, we have one that is scheduled, for instance, for Cameron Place this coming year in FY twenty- for Cameron Place this coming year in FY '26. But as you can see, some of those other areas are frequent problem areas that we have for drainage. So, this would actually help us with some of those drainage issues that we have and be able to plan again for the future. Second one that I want to talk about is this really pipe replacement. So, again, trying to be proactive as opposed to reactive. These pipes that we have are corrugated metal, and so, when you live in a saltwater environment, they're prone to failure. And so, what we want to do is try, again, try and plan for the future. Instead of waiting for these pipes to fail, come up with a replacement rehabilitation plan to actually turn these pipes into concrete or plastic. And that way, we would get a much longer shelf life of up to 50-plus years on those pipes. And so, that's our second drainage project. And then, the last one I just want to talk about really is more of an opportunity. And so, this as an opportunity, I think we all know, based on Pinova and the fire that they had a couple of years ago, we have those two sites. So, we have both the east and west side of Highway 17. But, and I'm going to read this slide because I think it's impactful for us to kind of get this on the record. "We stand at the threshold of a transformative partnership, an opportunity unlike any before, that has the potential to open doors for everyone in our community and shape the next century of growth, prosperity, and connection." Again, this is a 100-year opportunity for us. This visionary redevelopment would serve as a true gateway linking the Golden Isles and the city of Brunswick. More than just the physical connection, it would unite the community through strategic infrastructure improvements, including enhanced traffic flow between Altama Highway 17 and downtown Brunswick. Beyond that connectivity, the project brings with it renewed tax base, critical to reinvesting in our future. It also paves the way for diverse and improved housing options that benefit our citizens and the local institutions like the hospital and the college, and also supports the broader needs of our growing area. This opportunity offers a blank canvas to create a thriving, sustainable, and vibrant community. Additionally, this site could catalyze new tourism initiatives, amplifying Brunswick's appeal as an exciting coastal destination while creating jobs and opportunities for residents. It's more than a redevelopment opportunity. It's a legacy in the making. And actually, for this, we do have some of our partners here. We do have the city of Brunswick here represented. We also have the Chamber. We heard from Ryan from the Economic Development Authority. And we also have the CBB. But again, this is, we're talking, this property here is 350 acres. So, there really is something there for everyone, we believe. And we also believe this is really a more of a whole-of-community approach, right? So, we, this is something that Pinova has, but we've had some conversations with the city and our other partners. But we think that, but together, working together with all of our partners and really making this a whole-of-community approach, this could set Glen County up, the city of Brunswick, and the Golden Isles up for many, many years to come. And so, one of the things that we want to do is get the community engaged in all of these projects, get the community engaged in what they see is the need critically for us over the next 10, 15 years. And so, we've established a website, or excuse me, we've established an email box. It's futureglenn@glencounty-ga.gov, and we're going to publicize this, and we'll get this posted as well. But we encourage the public to reach out and let us know what they think is going to be the most critical needs that we have here in Glen County moving forward. And then, we're also going to put together a survey that we're going to send out. So, we're going to ask our partners to actually help us send that survey out. We're going to send it out to the community through our own capabilities, but we want to make sure that we get this out to as many people as possible. We want to hear from them, and then we want to try and shape what is next in Glen County. So, Commissioners, that's a lot that we have. I know they're pretty broad topics, but again, it just shows the, it shows a couple of things. It shows that the Board is really thinking about the future of Glen County. It shows that we're being totally transparent because we want to make sure that the public has some input in what we think we need here in our community. And then, it also provides us the opportunity to hear from some of our partners as well in moving Glen County forward. So, Commissioners, any questions or any comments that you'd like to make? And like I said, we do have others here that can help answer some of these questions.
I have just a comment, Bill. First of all, thank you for kicking this off. It's, I think, a first blush or look at a lot of the needs, understanding that it's very broad-brushed. We'll identify more specifics as we begin to look at the broad topics for each one of these categories. But thank you and your staff for kicking it off and then sending out the mailbox. The public input is very important, and we'll get good ideas from the public on a lot of these opportunities. Thank you.
I'm going to second that. Thank you.
And I know a lot of work has gone into shaping what the future of Glen County is going to be. I think it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for us, but this commission is dedicated to looking forward. How are we going to expand our tax base? How are we going to replenish at Pinova the tremendous tax base that was lost there? But recognizing in that, that it has to be in that site, something for everyone. That's why we're partnering with the city and working with the city to make sure that whatever we do is in conjunction and pulling in the same direction. Because at the end of the day, we all want what's best for Glen County. And we're striving to do that and that development. If we move forward on it, and hopefully we can, there's absolutely something for everyone there. And I'm excited about that possibility. But circle back a little bit on some of our traffic needs. With the Old Jessup, we know that we're on Old Jessup, that we're sort of pinned in by the right-of-way restrictions that we have there. And Mr. Fallon mentioned a couple of options. One other option that was in the package that we could look at is extending the spur across 99 on out to where we know the new school is going, but to extend that even further to reach 341 again. That would take a tremendous amount of pressure off of the 341 corridor coming in, especially where it backs up at 303. But when we were in Atlanta back in January and February, talking to the Department of Transportation, we discussed with them needing some immediate remedy at the intersection of 303 and 341. They have committed to look at that. They have, within their capability, short-term funds that can help expand and alleviate some of the congestion that's there. So, in the very near future, working with GDOT, the 303 turn lane to right turn to come into downtown is going to be expanded. They're also looking at how to enhance the left turn lanes there to give some immediate relief there. So, those are just part of what we're doing, but we are dedicated to looking to the future 10 and 20 years out to what are our needs going to be and how are we going to meet those needs. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Fallon.
Thank you.
All right. We've come to the end of this. Is there a need for executive session? No need. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Second.
A properly motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Word, adjourn.